...the City Council unless they are otherwise listed on this agenda for discussion and legal action. Exceptions allow for council members to ask staff through the city manager to review a matter or put a matter on a future agenda, or respond to criticism at a conclusion of the opening call to the podium. Speakers must present at the podium. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending the meeting. Unauthorized from the audience clapping, stomping on feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are also prohibited. Violation of these rules will result in the removal of the City Council meeting. I'd like to start the public process with a brief statement as well as an update on the criminally administrative investigations into the death of Antonio Arce. As a council, we always maintain that the death of Antonio Arce was a tragedy, and while we have had to respect the process and state law, we also express our condolences to the family, and we know that they are hurting right now in light of the county attorney's decision not to charge former Officer Heine. The Arce family is left with a decision from the county attorney that does not provide them with a satisfying resolution, and that must be frustrating. I know that those of you here this evening are also frustrated with the county attorney's decision. While we cannot speak to the county attorney's decision not to charge Officer Heine, we did release the administrative investigation, and it found that former Officer Heine violated police policies and procedures, and former Officer Heine was found to have acted outside the scope of his training, and had he not resigned, he would have faced discipline for his actions that led to the death of Antonio Arce. Moving forward, I firmly believe that my role as well as the council's role lies in helping our community come together and continue to build a Tempe that is safe and that focuses on our core values of mutual respect and understanding. And currently, we are working with Pastor Andre Miller on a community conversation, and our first community conversation will be March 3rd. There will be more to come on that information and that forum, but at this time, I would like to ask Pastor Andre Miller if he can come forward to the podium and have a little time for us.
Thank you, Mayor Vice Mayor Council. The Antonio Arce case has pushed the community and the city to a point where collaboration, transparency, and changes are a must. I stand here as a father of a teenager, an advocate who has dealt with the Mesa Police Department, the mayor of the county, the sheriff's office, Peoria School District, Banner Hospital, and other agencies to do what it takes to ensure we do what needs to be done to rebuild trust and ensure the community has a collective voice that is heard. Chief Moore has committed to me to setting seats at the table for concerned citizens in March as we dive into policies that are of great concern for the citizens who are served in the city of Tempe. The mayor and council have also assured me their commitment to continue dialogue with measured actionable items that affect us all. Not only have they committed to have conversations, they've also committed, the council, the mayor, and the chief, the city attorney, have committed to move and have actionable items for a concerned community, and for that I'm grateful. We all understand that no one should lose their life when they have an encounter when avoidable with the police officer, and we should push to make sure that these occurrences like this are rare and never common, not only in Tempe but also beyond. So I want to offer a website for you all tonight to contact me. The website is communityarmor.com. Communityarmor.com. If there is any resident in the city of Tempe who has a desire to be a part of this transparent process as we move forward, please reach out to me. I'm available to talk, I'm available to share, and I look forward to being a part of the process as we make Tempe better for all who live, all who work, and all who travel through the city limits. Thank you, Mayor Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Miller. With that, now we're going to move into our scheduled public appearances tonight. We have Ms. Verdi Hernandez. Please come forward. Please place a presence on the record.
She's up. Go over there.
Jeanne, come in. If Vida's not here, we can go to Sarah. Sarah Tocola? Is Sarah here?
Yes. Wait. Vida, sit.
Hi, good evening. Please state your name and place a presence on the record.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vida Hernandez Hernandez. I am from Phoenix, and I am here today as the director of Full Action, which is an organization that works across the state, specifically in Phoenix right now. I advocate for changes in the police departments. I'm here today because of, you know, where Tempe has been in the last few months, but also think the opportunity that Tempe has now to move in a different direction. As an organization that works with police departments, that works with people of color, that works with people who have been hurt and feel a lot of pain in their attraction to the police departments. We know that this is hard overall, but we also know that the trust between communities and policing are fastly growing in distance and deteriorating because both of the televised and the non-televized incidents that people of color, specifically young people and women, have experienced. And so today, just here, you know, a few weeks ago, Mayor Mitchell, we heard your support and commitment for civilian oversight of the Tempe Police Department, right? A civilian oversight that would allow firing power and subpoena power. And that is, when we heard that, that is a good, that's something good, that we wanted to just echo, that cities across the United States are facing this crisis in this moment that are in this place of wondering, what do we do when the distrust between the new majority and police departments is growing, when there is very little sometimes hope of how do we move forward in these moments? And so just wanted to come and offer our experience and also our support and what are some ways of moving forward. We work with different cities nationally and in collaborations with also with families' police departments, and sometimes it is more friendly, sometimes it is less friendly, but we have been able to work together. I think the most critical voices and people directly impacted are necessary because that's how we know when we're truly moving forward, when the most critical voices and people and families who are in pain and hurt can agree with the changes that are happening. Some steps that we recommend is for a few review and assessments of the police department policies with national best practices, specifically around the use of force policy, immigration enforcement, the report writing policy, the transparency protocol after critical incidents, the family response, and the communication with families after critical incidents, review of the practices of early intervention systems, of the de-escalation practices and policies, of mental health calls, response, and practices. Those are just some areas that are both in policies and practices that can be reviewed by the city of Tempe that have been done in several other places. Sorry, is it Tempe?
Yes. It is, if you could just wrap up.
Okay. And just to finish that, like, that work must be done, but it must be done with the families that are directly impacted, it must be done with community groups that are the most invested in this issue. It cannot be done by the city alone. So we just wanted to follow up and offer our support in any of that process and hope that you take the steps necessary to start moving Tempe in the right direction.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Tocola, and just so everybody knows, everyone has three minutes, and then if you could, direct the lights so you can get his green and then yellows, about 30 seconds left. Thank you.
So I'm happy to see that you have learned from this experience. It's sad that it took the death of a 14-year-old, but perhaps his loss will prevent many others. Mayor Mark Mitchell, at the January 29th Youth Led Tempe Candidate Forum, you said you support a citizens' review board that has subpoena and higher and firing power, and that the composition of the board would be those of those most impacted, communities of color. Is that, is that true, Mayor?
Yes, that's something that we're going to work on with our forums, and we're going to have, and we're going to actually work, and I'm glad that Vida spoke earlier, so we can work with her, so we can have those community forums with Pastor Miller.
Because if that's true, we're happy to hear that, and we would like to be on that same page. So we're wondering how we're going to get the ball rolling, because we understand that you currently have a use-of-force committee that does not have firing power. We understand that subpoena power will take a change to the city charter, and we don't even necessarily need subpoena power if we have fire power. We also like to make sure that we have a seat at the table, and I think that you have a great model to look after that we're working on right now in Phoenix with Phoenix's civilian review board, which we're drafting with District 8 and a community coalition. We would like to see a similar community coalition here, and it's really important that, you know, that it's not just a few tokens chosen, but that we all have a seat at the table, especially those of us who've been here since day one. In addition, we want to make sure that with the civilian review board, it has the same pillars that we're pushing for in Phoenix, that it is independent, investigative, transparent, and community-driven. In addition, we, we need to see a change to the use-of-force policy that allows not only Antonio Arce's life to be taken and the officer to go free, but also allow Dalvin Hollins' life to be taken. Currently, the use of policy has throughout the document the idea that if there is a reasonable belief, one can use violence even to the point of death. Reasonable belief is a subjective term. We need to take out the subjectivities in the use-of-force policy, because it is through the subjectivities that bias and racism is allowed to come in, and how officers are able to continue to get let off after a murder. We also want to make sure that deadly force is to never be used on children at any cost, nor is it to be used near children like we saw with the Oak Ridge case. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to us continuing this conversation.
Thank you. For unscheduled, I have some cards in front of me. Mr. Darian Barrett?
Hello, Mayor. I'm here. A year and some weeks later, after the death of Antonio Arce, I'm glad you guys spoke up about, you know, Joseph Heine violating the code of conduct, the use-of-force policy. What I don't agree with is how long you guys bit your tongue and held it. I want to thank Sarah for mentioning Dalvin Hollins. His federal case is actually starting in four weeks. He's a parent by his mother, so I'm going to be focusing on him a lot more. Antonio Arce, you guys said that you're going to work on retraining your officers. If you're going to do that, bring proof. Stop posting a picture on Twitter that says that this officer made it through training. Provide more proof. Provide a video of them going through. Provide the evidence. You guys want to rewrite the use-of-force policy. When we do a public resurrendance request, if I'm correct, the version we get is from like 87 to somewhere in the 90s. If we're going to rewrite this policy, we need city leaders to reach out to community leaders in order to, you know, make this use-of-force policy transparent with the community and the city. We need, you know, we can't be biting our tongues, Sylvia. It was a long time, and you did it with Dalvin Hollins. You too, Michael Lee. And in this case, it wasn't the gun that killed Antonio Arce. It was Joseph Heine, mentally ill person that you guys let back onto the force plenty of times within a three-month period. Sylvia, you shouldn't, even if it was before, Michael, you've been around. You should have known to tell your police chief that Officer Joseph Heine is not stable and fit for the community. I know Sylvia has heard you say last year that Officer Joseph Heine was unfit for this, for his job. I've requested to meet with her. It was, it was brought to the attention that I should meet with her with someone. You know that this use-of-force policy needs to be brought to the attention with the community. Other than that, I respect the fact that you guys did acknowledge the use-of-force policy being violated. Just, you know, from here on, continue what you're doing. Continue spreading the word that we want to hear, not what you want to provide. I know you can only provide so much, but if you work with the community, the community will work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Queen Love. Could you please state your name and place a presence on the record?
Thank you, Pastor. I'm Queen Love, and I am a resident here in Tempe. I also work here in Tempe. I am here to support the victims as well, but I'm also a mother of four men, four young men, and so therefore two of whom are with me. Where my direct concern is, is what has occurred, and it hasn't just occurred in Tempe, it occurs everywhere across the world. My question is, when do we, when does it stop? When does the excuses stop? When does we allow these individuals, I call them monsters, anybody that's a murderer that can murder a 14-year-old child, that's running away from them, that's not harming, that's not a threat? When do we stop making excuses and covering their tracks? When does that stop? Because we can acknowledge, and we can acknowledge, and we can acknowledge. People are paying taxes for the very organization who protect their son. This is another form of bullying, and they have campaigns to get bullying. So it's almost like they're contradicting, contradicting ourselves. It's okay to bully in one area, but it's not okay to bully in this area. When does all this foolishness stop? We do appreciate that you recognize that any human of any type of heart would acknowledge that a child is not a threat to an adult. It's not a gang member. Everybody's not gang members. When does it stop? And that's my question to the council. When are we going to come up with a solution to stop having all these discussions that's going nowhere with no results? We're having all these discussions with no results. When do we come to a medium to say, this stops? No, you can quit, but you will not have your pension, you will not get paid to murder. You're going against your own policy. You're going against your own policy when you can murder and go home and get paid for it. To me, that's just disrespectful to life in general. Why do we as mothers have to fear that when our children, because my, my sons, they don't even look 17. They look like grown men, and to an officer that may have some type of chemical imbalance, he's going to find a reason to approach him. And because they've never been in trouble with the law, he's not going to know how to respond besides yes, sir, or no, sir. And then he's going to find a reason for that, that that may have been offensive, maybe in his tone, maybe in his stance, maybe in his posture. My 17-year-old is 6'4". My 17-year-old is 6'4". That can be very intimidating to a mentally ill officer. When does this stop? What is the protocol? What's the policy? Where do we go from here? Because it's not just this young man that died, but it's all over.
Thank you, Queen Love.
Thank you.
Next is Evan Harrison. Please state your name and place a presence on the record. After Evan, on deck is Notice Paz.
My name is Evan Harrison, I'm a resident of Mesa, and I'm a new member of Lucha in MCC. And so Antonio Arce was shot and killed by Officer Joseph Heine. He was 14, shooting a toy gun, which Heine believed to be a real gun, which was recorded on his body camera. He was awarded Early Accidental Disability Retirement after the incident. He faced no criminal charges, and as far as I know, he still faces no criminal charges for this incident. The use-of-force policy should be reviewed, as has been previously stated. Reasonable belief, need of force is a subjective thing, and racism definitely plays a part in that. You can't really say that it does not. An officer should be retrained. There should be, as aforementioned, evidence of this training, not just, oh, yeah, we trained him. We need to see that you have been doing so. This, so as far as the law, first-degree murder is any intentional murder that is willful and premeditated with malice aforethought. Second-degree murder is intentional killing that was not premeditated. The sentences for these, for first-degree murder, 25 years to life. The sentence for second-degree murder is imprisonment for 10 to 25 years. This is definitely murder. You may argue whether it's first or second degree, but it is murder. I can't, if I go and I stab someone with a knife, that's murder. People use excuses about police officers, about the stress of the job, and you don't know what the situation was, and, which I can understand to a point, but if I teach martial arts to children, if I hit one of my students, that's illegal, that's abuse, and I need to be responsible for that, and I will be held accountable for that. My mother's a physical therapist, and she doesn't do her job right, if she abuses one of her patients, she will be held accountable for that, and she will most likely be charged with a crime. So we, we need to hold the police to the same standards that we hold ourselves and other people. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Notice Paz? Please state your name and place a presence on the record. And then on deck is Oman Lee.
Hi, one of my first, yeah, I have to go because I'm lucky. Yes, my name is Nas Paz. I'm a current member of Lucha, a student at MCC. This certainly affects me because being a Latino man who happens to be part of the LGBT community, you know, I think to myself, Antonio Arce could have been my best friend or my friend, or anybody that I care about. I'm here because in the name of victims who died of police brutality, like Sandra Bland, Linda Castillo, Maya Hall, Paco Rivas, those are victims of police brutality. And for our members, we are here to represent our communities of the marginalized. We are here because we demand justice. We demand that justice be started, not in the favor of the law, but of the marginalized community.
Thank you. Oman Lee? And then on deck is Kathy Mancini. Please state your name and place a presence on the record.
Hi, my name is Oman Lee. I'm from Tempe, Arizona, and I wanted to talk about two matters that recently happened. One, on January 28th, where I encountered a Tempe police officer who stopped me and some sort of mistaken identity thing, where he mistook me for somebody who's six, six foot six. And detained me against my will, also holding up the city bus, which I was about four. Second thing that I wanted to address was on February 4th, I don't know if anyone saw it in the news, the four-year-old boy that was picked up, tossed, and kissed, and that was my son. Horrible story, the way they wrote it in the news. I did chase the man down from a corner inside the store until the police came. He was arrested. They charged him with felony assault against a minor to let him go on Saturday morning at 5:30 a.m. and dropped charges. And I got no answers, asked her as to why this occurred, as I've had no answers as to why this officer detained me, and no one responded to my complaint, no one, no one of his superior responded to my two phone calls, nor the two police responded to my single phone call, and I still have not yet heard anything from internal affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Mancini?
Thank you for letting me speak. Quickly, I'm just going to reiterate what I've been requesting for about 20 years now is that I request that all public safety staff, excuse me, sorry, I forgot to tell you, I'm a resident, a lifelong resident of Tempe, Arizona. I'm a volunteer justice and mental wellness advocate. I'm going to reiterate that I've been requesting for about 20 years now that I, all justice and law enforcement staff be crisis intervention-trained. I think we've gotten about 30% of that now, and there is no reason that we can't focus on that sort of training. It's a 40-hour, one-week training. It's very minimal in nature. It is offered by a nonprofit organization called CIT. Seattle is 100% trained in their force. I'm not sure why we consider ourselves an innovative and forward-thinking, justice-oriented community, and the excuses I've gotten over the years from past council are, oh, we don't have the money, or we don't have enough officers out there to be able to send a handful to training. Well, I'm sorry, but I think that free training from CIT, or whatever it costs in kind to cover the officer's salaries and time off the streets or their offices, would more than make up for what lawsuits cost. So please, I encourage you to, again, consider training 100% of our justice court and complete law enforcement staff, which includes administrators and officers. Thank you.
Thanks for all the cards I have. With that, we're going to be adjourned. Yes?
So we're prescribed-
Vice Mayor Q. B.
We're prescribed, and what we can talk about, we can respond to criticism, and we can direct the city manager to take some action if there's consensus here in the council. Kathy, since you spoke, I just want to mention that our CIT training, we have 50% of our officers trained, and I know we're in an uppers trajectory. It's the most of any city in East Valley, but I agree with you, it's not enough. And hearing that Seattle's 100% is very impressive. I know that we have free CIT training through Law and Frontier, that nonprofit, it's an excellent nonprofit, and the training is really very professional and, and really respected. So I do want to instruct to see if we have consensus to have our city manager look into this, look into the CIT training, and find out what, what is the plan to increase from 50%? Recognizing that 50% is better than a lot of other cities in the East Valley, what is our plan? Because you're right, I mean, we should have, we should be at 100%. We should have a performance measure perhaps, but what I'm asking the city manager, if we have council consensus, is to look at CIT training and get a report back at a future session or a Friday package. And that's one thing. And then, and also I wanted to talk about some of the, again, I'm trying to work within the prescribed rules that we have here with public comment, and I want to very much respect that. But hearing, this has been such a devastating time in our city, and this happened, and how could it happen? How can we prevent it from ever happening again? So we're talking about community conversations, we're talking about, and Pastor Miller, I'm so glad to have you as a partner in our city. I respect you so much, and your words are felt deeply by me. But I think in addition to the community conversations, and we're talking about quarterly forums and quarterly meetings and establishing a stakeholder group, I think we have to, I am saying this, but I would like to ask your city manager to have staffs and stakeholders conduct a thorough and comprehensive review of our police policies and procedures and present that at a future work-study session. With the quarterly meetings we're going to have, or have a community conversation, we'll have other quarterly meetings that will embrace the entire community, and we want to hear from everybody. We still need information. I, for one, I'm a city council member of five years. I don't know what our police policies and procedures are. Maybe I was informed and got a book at one point, but I honestly don't know what they are, and I want to have a clear understanding, and I know there are, there are lots of groups, and Poder is one of them, that are subject matter experts. They bring, they bring passion and hurt and anger, but they bring subject matter expertise, and they're lending that subject matter expertise to the city of Phoenix. And there's been bumps on the road, but, but we know there's progress being made. We also have amazing expertise in our community. We have Charles Katz, who's with the, he's the Watts Family Director of the Center for Vinyls Prevention and Community Safety, a professor in the School of Criminology. He just came out with a book- He just came out with a book very recently, Thirteen Key Reforms in Policing. He's, he's a resource right here in our community. So I would ask, if I have council consensus, and realizing I need to have a majority of the council here today, that in addition to the plans that we have with Pastor Miller, that we have a comprehensive review of Tempe Police Department policies and procedures, and that they presented at a future work-study session and placed on the agenda. Some of those procedures too will involve looking at a civilian review board, and whether it has subpoena power, firing hiring power, I, I was very interested to hear that the mayor is in support of that. That is a policy that we have in our city, we have a force, a use of force committee, it meets very rarely, and we'll meet on the Antonio R. S. case at a date to be named later, you know, it has to go, we have to go through the civil procedure before that can happen. But in the meantime, we don't have the voices of our citizens that we can recognize and hear and ask those really painful questions that have to be asked, and we have to give the painful answers as well. So I will sum, I will, I know it's been a long night, and I don't mean to monopolize the time of the council here, but what I do want to ask is that the city manager have staff and stakeholders, really important subject matter experts from PODER, from Black Lives Matter, from Lucha, that we conduct a comprehensive review of PD policies and procedures for our council, and that it be presented and agendized in a future work-study session. Thank you.
Councilwoman Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor, thank you Vice Mayor Kubi. We acknowledge we have, we're very limited in what we can say. I just wanted to thank you all for taking time to be here today, speak to this council. I appreciated the substance and the tone of your comments, and as mentioned, we are working with Pastor Miller to start this healing process, because things were left out, was left out for a year, as we waited for a charging decision, and it is something that I don't think helped the way anyone felt, council included, and members of this city. So I'm looking forward to that process, I think Pastor Miller is going to be incredibly helpful in beginning that process and facilitating that process, and I'm looking forward to what these conversations bring, as far as policy changes and other actionable items that we can enact as a city and as a community to do everything we can to prevent further tragedies. So, again, being here tonight, I'm sure this is not how you would like to spend your Thursday evening, but it's important that these conversations are had.
Councilman Harrow?
Thank you, Mayor. Turn your mic up. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments, I appreciate the dialogues, and I, frustrating, and, but the thing that I think this council is looking forward to is making improvements. We want to be a city that other cities can recognize that we can make changes. We want to be a city that recognizes that we can do better, in various different ways. So that's our challenge. I think we're going to have a great discussion, make actionable, actionable items happen. We need, we need everyone to be part of this, and we need to make sure that we're making the best policies we can to keep people safe, and to make sure that we are going in the right direction, but I hope that this could be a template for other cities to follow.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ariana Savage?
Just really quick, Mayor, and I just appreciate my colleagues and the words that they said, and I certainly do appreciate you all being here, and great appreciation for Pastor Miller to want to be involved and really help us move us forward. I think this is going to be part of the healing process, but part of the better process in the sense of how we become a better organization, and we keep our community safe, and we do it in the right way, with transparency and inclusion, which I believe Tempe is all about, but we can always do better. So I look forward to what those steps are, I look forward to seeing what some of the recommendations are after a lot of this dialogue takes place, and I, I know we all will see change in the future. And I think you can count on that, and I think you can count on that from this council. So I look forward to the process moving forward. I hope and encourage those that want to participate to please participate, take Pastor Miller on his offer, to reach out, to look into the website, I think that would be a really great first step. Inclusion is really important to the city of Tempe, change is really important in the sense of where we can do better. And also, I just want to say, as we move through this process, it's going to be really important for me to make sure that we are addressing things in the right order too. I don't want to just give charge right now, today off the dais, but what I'd like to do is give Pastor and the time to really understand where we can make serious change, and where we need to look into to do a deep dive. And that's what I am going to support and back up, and certainly do respect. So with that, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and for all those that are here tonight.
Thank you. With that, again, I want to, okay. Vice Mayor?
I am so appreciative of Pastor Miller, of you coming forward, and Lord knows, we need to have more conversation, we need to listen, but how can the committee give recommendations if they don't know the policies and procedures that we operate under? So that's why I think, and why I'm asking tonight for council consensus, to ask our city manager to work with our internal staff and with stakeholders, subject matter experts in the community, to do a very thorough, comprehensive review of our policies and procedures. Listening is good, community conversations are good, but, but it's been a year and a month, and we need, we need to act, and one of the ways we act is to do a comprehensive review of our policies and our procedures, and we can't put this off for quarterly conversations. I think, again, I'm asking for council consensus tonight to just do a review of our policies. There are lots of cities doing this across the country, sadly, but affirmatively, right? There's a group that, there was a piece in USA Today, sorry, there was a review of police policies in a whole host of cities. Every city failed, every city failed, and we'll most likely fail when we look at our policies and procedures. But that's the point where we start with a serious digging deep into our structure, the way we think about things, and the difficult conversations that we'll have to ask of ourselves as a council too. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not satisfied with leaving a meeting saying we're going to have a series of four community conversations, we're going to talk about this and hear from all of our, our neighbors and our residents. I mean, I want to hear that, of course, but I also think we need to have a comprehensive review, and we need to know what our policies and procedures are before we can comment on and make recommendations. So I ask, do we have consensus?
Well, one thing I do know that, I think we all want to get to what you just mentioned, but in order for us to do that, we have to have this first meeting with Pastor Miller, with the stakeholders, and that's why we're asking them to be involved. And that is something that I think is very, very important for this body, to understand the policies that we have, get information, and there's no reason why we can't get the information from our city manager on the policies, but more importantly, have this community dialogue with Pastor Miller, with our stakeholders. That's the first step, and we mentioned it's going to be on March 3rd. So I think we, with that information in front of us, we can move forward and have a deeper dive, and have some actionable items that we discussed here tonight.
But Mr. Mayor, did I just say that you think baseline information is needed before we have this series of conversations? Because that's basically what I'm asking for.
Councilwoman Ariana Savage?
You know what, Mayor, I, you know, I'm not really comfortable shooting from the hip tonight and saying what we should, should do without having some more dialogue with Pastor Mayor and Miller in regards to what your process is and what steps to include. I would think that we are going to get to that, and that is going to be the biggest piece of what we do, and, and I just, I just don't know the steps in order to get there, and I would entrust in your professionalism, and I know you're very familiar with best practices, and I would hope that you would give us some guidance of what that looks like. I don't want to direct you to tell you how to do what you do best, I want you to be able to tell us and give us some recommendations of how we can move forward in the most effective way possible. So I would, I would like to have that conversation first there, before I make a decision of where our next steps are, before we have that dialogue with Pastor Miller and the team.
Mr. Mayor? So what is that process though? I mean, that's what I'd like to see more clearly defined, and maybe we put it on agenda for work-studies so we can discuss the process, because I'm just afraid that, you know, a series of quarterly meetings, it's just going to drag on, we know, we know, I think we've heard tonight, I think we've heard over the past year, that we want to have more actionable information, and we know that the city of Phoenix is working with a task force that are, that are, you know, lost in the, they're in the nitty-gritty of looking at every single line of every policy and procedure, and I feel like to put it off to, we need to do community conversations, and please don't misread that I'm saying that we shouldn't do that, because we want to hear from everyone, but we need the deep dive with subject matter experts, and we need to have a baseline of information about what our police policies and procedures are.
Pastor Real Chair, are you comfortable giving up? I don't want to put you on the spot, and I know this is kind of new moving forward.
I believe I mentioned in executive session that we're going to be working with the chief.
Wait, hang on.
I'm not going to say everything, I know, but.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Executive session discussions are confidential and need to remain confidential, and I think that there may be ample time for us to continue this conversation if it's actually placed on a council agenda, so we can have that robust consideration.
Okay, well, I won't say that. So I have spoke with the chief about having conversations with the community as far as policy goes, and looking at policies with organizations like Purk, this is the police executive research forum, and so with doing that, that would have us have civilians at the table as well, who are not familiar with policy, so they can be abreast of policies and know what actually needs to be changed. So the plan is to have those conversations with police administration, with rank and file, and with citizens, people who are in this room right now, about the changes that need to be made with policies. So we will make sure that people are aware of policies, that they are educated on policies, and that way we can have educated conversations and discussions for policy change, so.
What can we do, as we said about the voting on today, getting an action item, because many of the things the city manager needs to investigate in the first place? Good morning, sir. Kubi had asked to vote today about doing the investigation.
Not to vote, but to seek consensus, to ask the city, because that's what we can do today with our kind of prescriptive agenda and the open meeting laws, so that's what I was asking the manager, because the city manager, and to, and to bring it back at, maybe not a specific, specific work-study session that we, you know, conjure up a specific date, it can be within a period of a few months, but I think we have to have a public discussion about what the process is going to be, and it's not just about conversations and discussion.
And Vice Mayor, that's exactly what we're trying to do, and this is what Pastor Miller just said, we are going to have, there's policies right now in the police department that are online that we all can look at, but more importantly, I think we're going to take the direction of Pastor Miller, we're going to have that form, we're going to reach out to the stakeholders and the civilians, and understand the policies that we have, take a deeper dive in those so we can have an actionable item, and that is going to happen, and that's what we've mentioned on March 3rd. So I think that it's important that we follow the procedure, the process that was just outlined as we move forward.